So we'll get started. Um, but it's the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, September twenty-sixth. Um, this meeting uh is being recorded. Is anyone else recording? No, I think you're recording, so um we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, we'll call Malcolm.
Here.
Jackie.
Here.
Pedro.
Here.
Jonathan.
Still here.
Brandy, here also. Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda is a Form A for um one thirty Pearl Burton Road. So we have that planned before us. Uh, did you want to shut on screen or?
I thought the surveyor would be present.
Shall we give them a moment?
Yeah.
We'll give them a minute and.
Oh, here's the, here's one.
Sure. Let's give him a minute to log into the meeting. We started very promptly.
You think they're coming from Watertown? I don't know where Watertown is.
Bye Irene, you should be able to talk. We just um introduced her. I don't, I don't know if you want to.
Okay, awesome. I don't know. I can't. Can you guys see me? I don't know if I can.
Uh, let me promote you to panelist status.
Join as panelist?
Yeah. All right. Well, you're on your end, but we can see you.
Hi, I'm Irene.
Hi Irene, how are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good, good. So um so your Form A for one thirty uh Pearl Burton Road is before us. Do you mind just giving your full name for um for our record?
Yeah, Irene Canello Pasquale.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, kids that are in the background, so I I'll try to go somewhere quiet. Um, yeah, do you guys have any, any questions for me about the, about the subdivision plan?
No, did you just, normally a surveyor will show up and they'll tell us, you know, this is a parcel at one hundred and thirty Pearl Burton Road and this is what it's zoned and um we're dividing it into four, or yeah, four zoning compliant lots.
Oh, I was sorry. I, I asked our, our surveyor um if he wanted to join and he said that I could, so I didn't, I didn't know if that there was.
That's okay, that's okay. So.
Basically, I, I can just tell you, basically, um, I just am, am um hoping to divide it to preserve the um um, the value of the land and um like if I were to ever want one of my children to have, build a house on the, on this land, that it would be subdivided into different lots. I have no intention of like selling them and developing them right now or in even in anywhere in the near future. I just, I just want to have it divided if I were to ever want to put part of, put a land in a trust for one of my kids or something like that.
Okay, um, and Chris, was there any commentary about the septic system traveling the parcel line?
No, uh, as far as I can see, the plan as drawn is entitled in the planning board.
Okay, I, I would um uh seek a motion to endorse, but just, I mean, just as a landowner, um, just best practices for your septic system to be fully on your parcel. And I know the plan says that it will be relocated, but um just don't forget about that because it's not something um a homeowner usually remembers. Um, and that will cause a big problem down the line if you don't take care of relocating it.
So, but wouldn't I only have to relocate it if I were to sell that lot?
Correct.
Okay, because I was gonna say, I feel like I don't, I don't really have any intention of selling that lot i- in s- and nowhere in the next several years, so I.
I just often make comments on best practice and.
Great.
That's just one of the best practices is to make sure you, you control your whole septic system.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion. Do we have a?
Second.
Second, but Malcolm, uh, any discussion? Um, all in favor?
Fine, fine.
Any pros? Okay, most carries will um will sign the Mylar and will this do the checkup then?
Yes, so I'll have to sign Mylar now and this signed one can then be recorded with the registry.
Do I need to go back to the registry to record it or, or? Okay, so I, and I can go anytime that I want or?
Uh-huh, it'll be here at uh my office in town hall to pick up whenever you want.
Um, okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, have a good night. Bye-bye. All right, moving on, we've got the minutes of September twelfth. We have a motion to approve amended.
Oh, move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Um, second by Malcolm, do we have any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Yeah.
Let's get this map signed and then we'll move on to item number four, which is our change of various factors of the master plan. Um, switching over to ten years, I wasn't sure if if you lost. Hi Vivian, thanks for joining. Um, so we are signing this Mylar and then we're gonna move on to item number that we can focus.
During the nuts line?
I don't know, I, I can hear.
He didn't vote.
I thought he voted.
Okay, okay.
It was silent. He's taking right at the vote. Let's see.
You think that? Well, sure. All right, so um our goal tonight is um to follow our work from last meeting and continue to work through the next four chapters of the master plan in terms of just evaluating kind of big chunky issues that we see. Um, making annotation about new reports that have been issued in the intervening time. Um, this is obviously, this means following our Monday night meeting, which we were all present at except for Jackie, but I know Jackie's reviewed the tape on it.
Washed TV.
It was telling color and I'm sure. Um, and at that meeting, for those in the public who weren't there, uh, the select board and the planning board jointly agreed that an update to the master plan is warranted and that we'll take an initial step to form a committee. Um, so we're just in the infancy of, of a whole process, much to be figured out. Um, Chris and I will be meeting in the coming weeks about kind of a big picture schedule. Um, I know you and I had a call about that. I'm gonna sit down with Chris and kind of work through an outline and then we'll bring that outline back to the board.
Okay.
Um, and we will, of course, make sure uh that we are keeping the community informed because I'm sure there'll be a tremendous amount of inter- interest in this. Um, so our goal this meeting is to get through chapters six, seven, eight, nine. Did we all do our homework? Yes, well done everyone. And then um probably on the meeting on the tenth, we'll um we'll continue and catch those last two chapters.
Oh.
Okay. There's, there's a ten and eleven still, so. All right, so getting started in chapter six, so this was like our sweet spot. Um, seems like something we've not talked about at all recently. I mean, physician. Uh, at our last meeting, we actually said that we should update the housing needs assessment since it was a twenty nineteen document, so I think we just continued that, but I think that's a miracle task we could probably look into and. Um. The other thing out of housing, I mean, I don't need to like walk us through everything, but um Jonathan, you had some data uh out of the report that Chris had provided in Monday's meeting packet about median home price. And I think you said something around five fifteen.
Yeah, it was, in, in twenty twenty-three uh residential properties sold through Realtors, which is probably ninety-five percent of the market or something. Uh, was five hundred and fifteen thousand, was the median price.
Okay. Uh, but clicking through this section, I mean, it was um, it, you know, there's obviously still work to be done on housing, but it's really nice to see how much of what was in the master plan has moved on, like getting ourselves beyond the ten percent threshold for affordable housing and adding short-term rental or um adding ADUs and I think a new issue that I was thinking about was the short-term rental issue. That's something that's come up in the intervening time. Were there any other um housing issues as you read through this that you thought, you know, we need to, we need to make sure we focus?
Uh, I just thought a lot of it still needs to be done. I mean, we need a lot of data. We have to update all the data, but actually, when you look at the problems, when you look at the problem statements and.
They're almost all the same, right?
They still need to be done.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's, we still have this need.
Right.
Even though we've made progress, it's still not enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, because, you know, we, some of us were at the BRPC meeting on.
I think it's.
Is that last night? Oh.
It's been a long time ago.
But it's interesting, this state is putting out some new incentives too, so there may be, as we get into this process, there may be some new incentives that we can consider. Okay, um, so.
I think we should, yeah, we should probably hold into this uh the data for the new uh housing.
Yeah.
Doesn't need study?
Yeah, what, what, whatever it's called. It's going into effect in February, is it, right?
Um, well, wait, so this is, yeah, I live to.
State, yeah.
The state program.
Yeah.
The state housing study?
No, the ADU program.
Oh, the ADU program.
Yeah. That law is, is coming into effect in February, right, right. Also, the secretary mentioned last night that the state is doing a statewide housing plan. Uh, I think over the next several months or. It probably won't get to Western Mass.
I.
Start with.
Go west to east.
To west. And then here, we'll update the housing needs study.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. Uh, Brad, from your standpoint, is there any other major housing issue we should be focused on or any new area of housing that the Affordable Housing Trust is looking into?
I, I see that by my count, we've brought on about a hundred and fifty new units of affordable housing with that, with Russian and such in the last five years, all rental housing. I think the market lacks that first-time homebuyer house, that initial house. Jonathan mentioned the average of the median price of five hundred and sixteen thousand. That's beyond the of you. The market's locked up because it doesn't have that ability to stepstone through homeownership, and I think that I agree with what Malcolm said about everything that was a problem in twenty thirteen. Now it's almost on steroids, but um I see that we have this dual housing problem of rentals and homeownership, and the market is completely locked up. It's a thought.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. I'm gonna note about starter homes. Okay, good. Thanks for coming tonight, by the way.
Yes, so I have a question on that.
Yes.
So where, Chris, do you know where funding like that is on, on like the state level? Because I know it's kind of switched from.
Funding for home, like home, fire authority?
Versus rental and affordable housing, like subsidized.
Um, but I, I don't know, Jeremy, there's I think. Part of that five billion dollars.
Yeah, programs have often favored the creation of rental units in larger projects.
Hmm.
Um, so I understand what you're asking.
But I think part of that five billion dollars, I think Secretary Gussis yesterday said part of that five billion dollars had to do with uh um assisting homeownership uh down payment assistance and things like that, how that's gonna be routed to the towns of, you know, that's, who knows?
But he was making an interesting, compelling argument about the flight of people of a certain age after we've educated everybody and gotten them ready to work. They have no, they can't afford to live here. So they're leaving, so they're looking at the need to, what do we do to bring, like we're averaging, is it fifty percent of, of of salaries going toward, they're looking at possibly having fifty percent of their salaries going towards paying for a house. And but in other states, they can go to other states and it's maybe twenty or thirty percent.
Mm-hmm.
So he was just citing those numbers and it says, well, what can we do about that?
Yeah.
They're looking at subsidies or.
I'm sure we're gonna have a robust discussion when it comes to housing because it's a critical issue.
And Housing Bill has a lot in it.
Yeah.
Five billion dollars, that's.
Well, and maybe our timing is right in terms of updating the master plan and, and being able to like let the state figure that program out and then pull whatever relevant pieces are appropriated into.
Um, one of the programs that was uh mentioned in the commission meeting that preceded the annual meeting yesterday was a um home modification loan program, which has actually existed for a bit of time. And um I didn't realize how, how useful it can be. Um, there's an income threshold. The income threshold for qualifying for this is you have to have an income, if you're a single-family household, your income has to be less than two hundred and seven thousand dollars a year.
Two hundred and seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Percent.
Single-person household. I'm sorry, a single-person household. Then it goes up from there. Uh, and you can get up to fifty thousand dollar loan to make uh modifications to your home. Uh, and you don't have to pay it back until you sell your house.
Hmm.
So it's, it could, you know, I don't know, I, we haven't promoted the program. Uh, the state hasn't really done a good job promoting, promoting the program, but BRC has uh two people that are willing to travel anywhere in the county to sit down with homeowners and help them fill out the forms and, and get the money.
How, how is?
To be clear, though, it's, the program is designed for people with disabilities and elderly.
Yeah, there has to be.
Always defined. Is this energy efficiency or is this accessibility? So this is accessibility.
It could be ramps, it could be if you're, if you're getting older and you need a bathroom on the first floor, it could be, you know, but but basically, we talked about people staying in their home.
Yeah.
And this is actually a really good program for helping people stay in.
They would, if they would consider um upgrading people's cooling.
So, air conditioning, yeah, guys, you know, I mean.
Hot sticky summers, yeah.
Can you tell us again where that's from?
Uh, this is, there, there's, uh, you can Kristi Lewis at BRPC is the named contact, uh, the regional provider agencies. And this is the Home Modification Loan Program, HMLP.
Eileen's gonna send that to her.
Oh, yeah, you sent it to Eileen, didn't you?
She's, she's ill, so she hasn't been able to get to it, but she, she has all that info she's gonna put on her newsletter.
I, I mean, yes, okay.
And the town of Egmont has it on the website, so you know, you give it a, yeah, we put it on the website.
I mean, the more ways we can promote it through Eileen or the edge or, you know, the, I'm sure the Eagle will have something now and uh uh they were at our meeting yesterday.
Yeah, we, we've gotten those in the past and something now.
Mm-hmm.
Do, do we know if anything's posted at Council on Aging or the Senior Summit?
We have in the past.
Yeah, okay.
So do things like, could you modify your um your unit to add like an accessory?
Yeah, he said you can use it to, I mean, it's only fifty thousand dollars, but you can use it toward an ADU. Uh, if you're, say, your parent uh is elderly and, and is gonna move in with you, you know, you could use it to create an apartment.
To create an apartment, so you can have a caregiver move in?
Uh, I'm sure you could.
Probably need to look at the program.
Very liberal in terms of the qualifications uh when he was explaining.
It would be gone soon.
Explain the process.
I'll send the money.
Yeah, the two people at BRPC will come, they'll, they'll review the applications and they send it to a state. I'm gonna call them an inspector for like a better term, and then the inspector will come out and approve the application.
Okay.
That's impressive.
Great, good information. Thank you for sharing that. All right, so housing obviously needs to be updated with new data, new programs, all of that, so that will be an important section to consider. Um, the next chapter is agriculture. Um, and I know Vivian Orlaski is joining us. Thank you, Vivian. Um, just in terms of the process that we are um engaging in tonight, Vivian, you know, we're trying to identify if there are any really new key issues that wanna be considered in an updated master plan and if the agriculture section of the master plan warrants an update. Um, and you and I have had a couple of, of um attempts at connecting by email. Um, do you, are you able to speak? Do you have any commentary you'd like to share?
Oh, thank, uh, thank you, Brandy. Um, yeah, at this point, um the Agriculture Commission is in transition again. Um, I served as chair from twenty fifteen to last summer, uh, when I was sidelined. Um, and then we had a new uh chair who um stayed on until um uh just the end of the fiscal year. And we're in the process of, of looking for actually uh a new member and a new uh associate member. Um, and um, and then having our fall meeting hopefully in October. And at that point, I, I think we should discuss as the Agricultural Commission. I come to this from serving for just about three years on the uh uh two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen uh Agricultural Commission at that time, at least for part of that time and part of the meetings uh with the commission was with our then-chair Luke Prima. And um, um, so there was in, input when I served, there was, you know, in conference with others on the committee and then, of course, other members uh, uh, of, of the committee who weren't uh from the Agricultural Commission. Um, but um, so I, I guess my question now is um what opportunities are there going forward uh for our uh transitions? Hopefully, soon, uh, the Agricultural Commission to become involved uh as a whole and when would you be uh again asking uh the Agricultural Commission and other town committees to um uh have a nominate a, a member to participate in your more in-depth work?
Yeah, no, those are good questions. So um I think, you know, having only um on Monday night voted with the select board to form a committee and to work with staff to start to put together a list of uh boards and commissions that should make up the um, the master plan committee. It's encouraging to hear that the Agricultural Commission would like to participate, so we'll, we'll make a note of that. It's probably gonna take us a few weeks to get that together and, you know, start outreach to um boards and commissions in the community at large about who would like to be on, on the master plan committee. So I, I think we're probably looking at realistically, just given where we are in, in the calendar year and the holidays coming, we're probably looking at, you know, early next year, um, really digging in to engage um for our master plan update. And I think right now, i- if your commission has some feedback, early feedback, or even if you individually, given your long tenure, and the commission has some feedback as to whether or not you see the need for any major updates, or if it's just a matter of updating the data around agriculture, how much more land is in agriculture, or how much less lands in agriculture, and kind of who the key players are, so that we um can work those key stakeholders into our engagement strategy. That would probably be the most helpful thing.
Um, well, one area which certainly has become uh much more dominant uh since uh we may have mentioned it back then, but uh I, I just reviewed it before the meeting tonight and I, I think I saw some vague mention, but I think much more priority has to deal with the, a climate response. And uh, for example, there is an upcoming um uh training uh in mid-November uh by two people who are leaders in this field, both nationally and, and, and some of them, their work uh, you know, it goes beyond donation in terms of uh permaculture climate response, which is a, a more advanced uh or, or systemic, shall we say, maybe not advanced, but a more systemic approach to um, to climate concerning uh both agriculture on, and when we think of, you know, a, a fa- farm, but also in terms of, of gardening, which is something we talked about in the uh, uh, original master plan as being encouraged. Um, that farming uh along with those who make it their, you know, full-time work and profession and a larger use of land, uh, there, there are many people who benefit from uh, from gardening in terms of uh growing, growing food, which considering the impact of, of uh, of climate change on some of our uh primary uh sources of food, like the West and the Midwest, which are experiencing even much more dramatic changes and more serious changes to growing food. Uh, the more ways that we can encourage that locally, but in a way that adapts uh or helps us adapt to what we're gonna be facing as, as the climate changes. So I can, I can share with uh, with uh you, it's a very modestly priced uh series of, of uh uh, two uh, two days or two afternoons basically of training. It's four hours each afternoon. Um, uh, I could share that with you and with Chris in case any of you, just in terms of having a, a larger perspective uh would be interested in this uh permaculture climate response, powerful tools to cope with the climate. And um, and I think that is one area that does definitely merit uh much more attention. And I think the other area is something that was um uh included when we worked uh with the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission on uh their chapter on agriculture when they did a I can't remember, then a sustainability plan back here again, um, uh, more than ten years ago. Um, and um, that was in terms of education. Um, at that time, uh, you know, with local colleges or, or nearby colleges, at that time, uh, BCC was in Great Barrington. Uh, but we still have uh Simon's Rock now known as Bard College at Simon's Rock. And uh, we can certainly have uh, uh, relate to in our master plan uh educational outreach with BCC in um, in uh Pittsfield, which is actually uh more at the leading edge in what they're doing on, on this. And um, and then with, what, what's happening with our Berkshire, um, you know, um, regional uh Berkshire Hills Regional School District and the new planning for uh, for uh Monument Mountain. I'm on the Sustainability Subcommittee of their Building Committee, and I hope that they're gonna start paying more attention to the uh the use of the land as well as, of course, their, their primary focus on the, on the building. But uh, the land can be educational too, and that relates to what our town can become and our regional students who attend a school in our town, uh, what they can learn. So those are the two areas, I'd say.
Great, thank you so much. Um, one of the bits of feedback we got from the select board on Monday night pertained to where we can start thinking about uh regional issues and where we fit into the puzzle on regional issues. Um, do you think agriculture is, is a, a good candidate for um discussions about regionalization?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, I'm just starting to make a note about those things too. What can we do on a regional basis?
Like that processing, like the whole processing thing is like.
Like value-added products and, yeah.
Well, because we produce a lot of food, but then we don't have the capability to process it in the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And it talked about that, like, uh, I'm just not familiar. It talked about that in here with um like accessing the um commercial kitchens, like.
You may have to speak up. I don't know.
Oh, exactly. Um. I don't know where it's at, but in here it mentioned that utilizing commercial kitchens as um food process or places to process um agricultural products. Um, so it mentioned BCC and churches, and I don't know how much of that.
Is it relevant anymore?
Yeah. Well, no, or how much of that actually goes on.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it'd be good to look into that.
And I know there was like, there's um, there's processing need that are like beyond the capacity of just commercial kitchen, so.
Yeah, okay, all right. Um, Vivian, one more thing, if you don't mind. I was just curious about, um, I know specifically one of our strategies in the ag section pertained to balancing renewable energy with agriculture. Um, and I was curious if the ag commission has over the last couple of years discussed at all, like agrivotaics, where you're marrying them more closely rather than sort of bifurcating, um, maybe like grazing under um, solar or spacing solar in a manner that allows for row crops to be planted. Uh, I know we had one application, uh, a year or so ago where there was very small scale, um, proposal to do, um, some grazing beneath, uh, the panels. Um, had your commission discussed that at all?
Um, we didn't discuss grazing, but, um, there was a farm here in Great Barrington. Um, as you may recall, a number of years ago, I don't know, was, you know, you know, remember how many years ago better than me, where, uh, we were asked, and I remember participating in meetings, uh, with the planning board and the, uh, farm owners and, and others who were involved in this, uh, about doing, uh, solar on, um, um, I don't know whether it's pasture land or, or, or former field land, but where they weren't, didn't have any crops growing currently. So we did participate in that and there was, you know, uh, there was, uh, it, it was very helpful. Um, more currently, I think we need to be, um, that should be on the list because in other parts of the state, there are, uh, companies that are doing, um, basically massive destruction of agricultural land, um, but calling it agricultural land to put in, uh, massive, uh, solar installations, which totally overwhelm the local ecology. Um, and, and, uh, fortunately that hasn't occurred around here that I know of. I haven't heard about it. I do try to keep up with these issues. Uh, but when reading about what's gone on, uh, especially along the, um, uh, southeast, uh, coast of, of, of Massachusetts in Plymouth County, um, and in other locations, I think there's some going on in the, um, um, in, 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 um, uh, Hampshire County and maybe Franklin County in, in, in the, in the western part of the state. Um, a- and, um, this is something that distorts what can be a compatible relationship. So, yeah, that should be on, on the list, uh, uh, both positively and defensively.
Great, okay. Thank you so much for your input. I appreciate it.
That's a really good point. That's a real threat.
Yeah.
The, the new energy bill is going to
Where do you find the balance, right?
I know, but the new energy bill is going to allow a state agency to override local, uh, decisions on, uh, energy citing. So, um, we need to read that carefully and see if there are some way
Yeah.
that we can put protections in for agricultural.
Oh, that, that reminds me, uh, am I still on?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, um, yeah, I, I think you had discussion, but I, um, sometimes the audio isn't very good about this, this new revision on the, um, by the governor, which would take away local control of, uh, of some citing. Um, i- did you discuss that? Uh, is it my imagination that I heard it from the planning board?
Yeah, Malcolm just mentioned it and we were saying we need to discuss it further.
And we did talk about it.
And it's, and it really hasn't, I mean, the legislature still hasn't passed yet. They, they have to pass it in one of these informal sessions, which means it has to pass without objection.
Yeah.
But, uh, it's a, it's a high priority item for the governor, I know.
Yeah, so that, uh, that will be a really important issue for sure. So I, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, my question is action now because this, this discussion is, as I understand it, is very, um, urgent. I mean, I've been, uh, on various email lists that I've been on. I've been either, you know, encouraged to act on my own or sign on to one of these Action Network, uh, you know, group, group letters, um, and, um, to, um, uh, to remove the language from the legislation that, uh, would, uh, uh, remove the local control of our energy facilities. And, uh, so I, I, I don't know, uh, uh, Chris, is, is this on your, uh, uh, agenda anywhere? Has this come across in, in your emails among, you know, planners, that, you know, local planners who I wouldn't think would be very, very happy, uh, you know, you and your contemporaries, I think, would see this as, as something that, that really is, is a massive, uh, pulling out the rug from everything else that you do.
Yeah, so Vivian, uh, we did discuss it maybe two or three meetings ago. Malcolm brought it to our attention, um, through, um, B R P C. Uh, and I think we all individually reached out. I mean, that was kind of how we left it. Was that we were individually reaching out, so.
It's, I mean, this current thing, it only takes one objection to stop it, but it's gonna, but it's gonna come back.
Right.
Well, they, they apparently, uh, there's some other maneuvers they can do to, to re- to reopen a formal session, which will allow them to, to vote formally on it. So there's, there's, there are things they're doing. They really want this to pass, so I suspect it's going to.
And this is a big thing with technology, the, the like coming demands on the grid, um, for things like A I, crypto, I mean, even just the cloud, right? It's so much more and, you know, it's, and, and it seems to be somewhat separate from the discussion of climate change. And, you know, and it's like, no, we just have to do this, but like the demand for energy is going to be just
You see, they're gonna reopen three mile island.
I know.
For Microsoft.
Let's, let's not devolve it.
It's just the idea.
But these are the, we can make note that we want to have this.
Yeah, but where they're gonna come to look to produce energy is places like the Berkshires. And so, uh, we should be
A big discussion about that. We should have that discussion, but that is not where we are at the moment. We are gonna go to chapter nine here at some point, which is energy. So I'm making a note on that.
But it is good to have
Then we'll, then we'll argue the other side.
But, but I think Vivian wrote about the note in the agricultural section because we do talk about the, the
I think, uh, uh, as we're talking, I'm seeing like, you know, the master plan isn't these discrete things, right? It's there, it's like a Venn diagram. It all has these overlaps and so this is our energy and agriculture overlap, right?
Well, that's where the land is at that and, and, you know, pa- parks and, and recreation areas.
Exactly. All right, great. Anything else on ag board?
It's, I, I had a question for Vivian. Do you know anything about, um, uh, this, it's one of the strategies, the Massa- uh, Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation has a program to lease agricultural lands in state parks to farmers. Do you know if any of that has, um, happened in Great Barrington?
No, I haven't heard of that.
Yeah, I haven't heard of that one either.
If you, if you have, if you have anything, you know, uh, just forward it to my, uh, me via email, please.
I was just curious where it came from because it's Strategy A G five point three.
Go back and look in the notes.
And I was like, wow.
Yeah.
Well, D C R is like, um, and this pond, right?
Uh, I think it was considered a fountain pond. It's part of the C H P at one time. I think it was part of it, uh, was planted or something way back.
It seems like there is a little
Apparently some of its management is towards, but it's not what
That's not what this is.
But I think that strategy could be like if it was a sugar bush, right? So they're tapping for syrup or something. Yeah. What was your comment on?
Um, well, they mentioned community gardens in here, but I think that we should really put a lot of effort into that. I think the town should get involved.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, some of our park spaces and community gardens built. Actually put food on people's tables, but also put community.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're gardening with other people.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that's a really small step. It's easy, that could go a long ways toward building community and helping the
Yeah. That's a great one. Yeah, and I've seen it about green nature along that same line. Yeah.
This had come up in the last, I think it was the last C P A meeting, um. Oh my gosh, what was it from, um, Parks was there and talked about that. They are in discussions about, um, um, courthouse, the park there on, um, that maybe that as community or part of that is
Sounds like the whole thing.
Yeah. Which is really cool because the, a budding neighbor is a big gardener. So it'd be perfect.
All right. Anything else on agriculture? No? Okay, we'll move on to historical and cultural resources. Um, so in terms of major new issues for historical and cultural resources, I don't have any view into this area personally, so I'm not sure if we've done any. And Chris, maybe you know if we've done any new cultural resource surveys or if there's, um, I mean, the biggest thing is maybe the A M E Church and the Du Bois, uh, Center, right? In terms of
And the walking tours.
And the walking tours.
The, Malcolm's gonna be busy because he's gotta work at Husaton like next.
Yeah, that was
Go ahead, Chris.
The Historical Commission has used C P A funds, you know, part of the master plan strategy of preservation. You know, it's kind of a multi-pronged strategy. First identify what's historic, evaluate whether it should be preserved and protected and then protect. So the commission had, you know, using C P A funds and state grants from the National Historical Commission has done several studies throughout town, um, to identify historic assets, public and private. Um, uh, so that, that was a really important accomplishment. Um, they have more to do. There's a few, uh, grants that they've yet to be able to, projects they've yet to be able to, to launch. One is, um, a historic survey of Houston Village. I think there's, uh, an update needed for the Taconic West National Register District. And then a scattered site, you know, there's vestiges of Great Barrington's past scattered randomly around the hills and valleys of town. So the commission, uh, wants to accomplish those things as well. Um, so that, that, those are really important first steps. And then private properties like the old, uh, Clinton Church, Du Bois Center. And showcase it, but you see how long those projects take.
Excellent.
And how much money it takes to, to read out those, those buildings.
And so still an important section because it's some kind of a underpinning for Husaton and Great Barrington to have that historic touchstone, I think, um, and probably a, a smallish update to them.
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't need a major update, but there are things, there are new, uh, cultural, um, uh, assets. Clinton Church, for example, uh, there's, um, I would like to see, um, a goal put in here for, um, supporting the historical society in restoring their campus there, the Wheeler House and that barn behind it. Because between the historical society and the historical commission, we have about two thousand square feet of archives on the second floor at Ramsdale Library, which are inaccessible and, um, uh, even to us for most of the time. And, uh, it would be, I mean, it would be helpful to the town to have, um, a home for those things that would be accessible.
I, I'd echo that and say it's critical because everything is dying. I mean, in un-preserved, protected spaces, particularly think about the photography above, um, in Ramsdale Library. And you go into the, our historical center and you see photos post, you know, hanging by basically mass, yes, Scotch tape and mass, masking tape. And it's, it's horrifying. So there's real need for preservation.
There are, yeah.
Historical present.
I mean, the people that are, are man- are, are controlling that or, or are following standards. And you've seen photos posted up around, those aren't original.
No, but it's, I know what's going on.
The environment in the, in the area is horrible. There's no air conditioning, uh, you know, the
Temperature, humidity.
Humidity control. But all of the artifacts are, are properly put in, uh, uh, and has some free boxes and, and sleeves.
Yeah, but the temperature and the humidity is
It, it, the, the place is bothered.
Yeah.
And it can't
It's just not a proper space for preservation.
Yeah, it should be a call out.
Yeah, okay.
So, Chris, is that, is that much beyond like the scope of the, what we're seeing in the C P A requests from, um, uh, from the Wheeler House?
Yeah, the Wheeler House has been, uh, all the work that's been done in the Wheeler House has been done on the house itself.
Yeah, well, on the upstairs, I mean, they did talk about the upstairs for some of that material.
They did do that, but they can't put much up there because the, they don't have any engineering, um, uh, certification, uh, on how much that space can hold. Yeah, it's big. It's, no, it's certainly not
It's not enough for, yeah.
But, but the other thing is if we're gonna move an asset that the community owns in the collective to a place where it should be done accessible to people too and like
Yeah.
to put it upstairs and Wheeler House is not going to be accessible either.
Well, um,
It's, that's not handicapped accessible, is it?
The, the Wheeler House is, but I wasn't thinking about the upstairs. I was thinking that at some point that barn behind needs to be restored.
But didn't that, didn't that come up in the talks too about where the material? Am I just making this up where the materials would be brought down to an accessible?
Oh, they were.
Yeah.
Been discussed.
Yeah.
And that's what they do. And they're putting exhibits together now. And they, uh, the society hired an archivist. They got a grant from Husaton Heritage to hire an archivist to organize the society's archives. Uh, we're gonna piggyback on that a little bit.
Okay, yes.
It seems like, I mean, I think that should go in here, but it seems like the ask is gonna be like beyond this, like beyond the monetary capability.
Yeah, we're looking, we're looking at, uh, some grants, uh, we're gonna
Yeah.
We'll get some things there, but I, I don't mean to dive into detail, but I think that that should be everything as a goal.
Does a lot of those grants need to show like community support? And so then C P A funds are great for that.
Exactly.
Great. Um, Jeff, there are not any energy and climate.
So it seems like there's a lot of agriculture in here too.
The nexus of them too, right? So, um, I mean, my sense here is that we, there's a lot that's changed in the last ten years, both in like data and energy demand and types of energy and policies at the state level that we want to respond to. I think it's probably a major
If we're gonna, if we're gonna pick a section to rewrite.
Yeah.
Even though you talk about climate now, so this is all talking about like average warming and like that kind of thing and
Well, and I wondered and I wanted to ask you, Chris, if maybe this gets reworked in to, um, two chapters, like one on resiliency and one on energy. Uh, they do have some overlap, but the climate discussion, as far as I'm familiar with, is turning into one of resiliency and having strategies towards being more resilient in sort of a multi, um, faceted way that touches many of the other, um, areas of discussion in the master plan.
Yeah, you'll see a lot of, um, what might call a state-of-the-art approach lately in comprehensive planning is that climate considerations and climate resiliency is part of every single other chapter. Uh, it's part of housing, it's part of the economy, it's part of open space and markets, it's part of agriculture. It's built in, it's not its own separate chapter. Energy, how we produce energy, like a separate chapter, we think that's important. But climate change, adaptation, mitigation, and resiliency are part of everything that people are doing.
So that's probably a good way to look at it.
Yeah. Um, and then did we do any kind of community-wide municipal vulnerability assessment? Do we have something like that to build off of?
Well, we have a passion mitigation and climate adaptation plan. And we have so completed several municipal vulnerability grants, um, including one very important one, uh, that was an N P action grant that we did a lot of outreach, particularly with um, folks who we often, uh, aren't involved in the planning process. Um, we held a lot of by-the-wheel meetings, um, and, uh, talked a lot about, uh, about things that were important for those folks who, um, are of lower income or everybody still are, uh, the so-called essential workers, you know, during COVID, we saw shots. Uh at those uh low-income workers and frontline essential workers, and so we talk a lot. Folks uh in those areas about resiliency and what their priorities. By the way, priorities aren't any different than anybody else. Like clean, healthy, affordable food, you know, clean, healthy places, affordable places to live, you need to be able to get a rest to work. You know, it's, you know, we're all uh we're all shared concerns, and they're all.
Chris, how, this is a side issue, but related, how would we, as you living here in Great Barrington, learn about these programs that you do? Like you were just describing, with mitigation efforts and working with, you know, different communities and. Making sure they're involved in the discussions. Is that posted on the website anywhere?
Try to do our best to issue press releases and post things on the website.
Can we, so we could search on the website and find basically a description of what you did or when it was done or?
I possibly, yeah, I don't. Searchable things are, and I can't answer that specific question.
There's one, there's one goal that has to be changed though, for sure.
What's?
Uh make the town operations self-sufficient electricity by twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I am just curious. So I was on the energy committee like in twenty. And um before, when did we become a great? Um.
So to to that end, the the town is an off-taker of some of the large solar facilities.
Right.
So in that day, um at least. Back back then, um much of the town operations, including the wastewater treatment plant, electricity. Were essentially covered in the schools, in the schools, a caretaker as well, and the housing authorities too. Um so in that sense.
We, we can, we can check it off.
Yeah, I mean.
All the demands of the residents.
So I think uh what is solar and and wind and whatnot on every town buildings, some energy. And it's not possible, so this other solution of being an off-taker of projects.
The 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 strategy was also to reduce demand, so things like the LED streetlights helps reduce demand, right? And weatherization efforts in town buildings and facilities helps. Um but to Jeremy's point, you know, uh as we like decarbonize our energy consumption, we. Demand more electricity, so we need more generation of free electricity, carbon-free electricity.
That's, I mean, there are huge spaces, I mean, we just talked, community centers really got insulated, police stations between times.
Right.
I mean, these were basic steps that were like. Yeah, green communities are.
I was gonna say, the town got a number of green community grants to help fund weatherization efforts. Um, all right, so I think big overhaul here probably in terms of energy and climate. All right, um so those were the four chapters we wanted to get through. Everybody, can we read the last two for the next meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's great. So, uh Chris, the. While we're reading the agriculture section and trying to use the appendix, those maps are useless.
Okay.
They're a little blurry, aren't they?
And 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 possibly small, so if we're actually gonna think about these things, we'll need. Full-size maps or something.
Yeah, agree.
Beautiful color.
But uh.
Okay.
But I mean, mainly, mainly, I don't know if the online version is crystal. Um but I did notice that as well, I share Jonathan's concern, and my eyes are two or three years younger.
Your eyes are eleven years older.
But uh.
Yeah, we'll we'll build in to the master plan budget when it is developed. Restful grant to the services.
And maybe like storing that, right? Some sort of nice online. We can have that discussion. All right, so we'll read the next two chapters for our next meeting. Excellent, thank you. And then, like I said, Chris and I all get together and we'll try and put like a high-level outline together and. You know, I think we wanna keep, keep this process going and do the engagement that we were talking about in terms of. Reaching out to other boards and commissions and start getting people's streets flowing and try and build some um interest and excitement. Around an update.
And I know this doesn't, where does it fit to get a new, more up-to-date website for the town?
That is above my pay grade. We probably need to speak to the town manager about that.
Chris, you can't address that issue. Chris, are you keeping your head down on purpose?
This is our new website. We just got this website, buddy.
Uh a new website is in development.
Is it really?
Yes.
Wow.
ETA for a beta launch?
All right, Chris, do you have a town planner to work on?
No, but I did wanna check with the board to see when you wanted to meet, in October. I cannot meet on the twenty-fourth, which is the mutual second Thursday.
I also now have a work conflict.
Just meet on the tenth? I I don't know what business there would be, if we could schedule the tenth.
A photo in Pennsylvania.
Another date, which doesn't have to be a Thursday.
I um I'm also conflicted on trying first, so I'm fine if we just wanna um skip that second meeting, we don't have any pressing business.
There's a fifth?
No, the fifth is Halloween and I get like. I can't leave that to my husband alone, he will.
We could just stay here and hand out candy.
Right, exactly, trick or treat.
Be fun. Engages the younger citizen.
The master plan, yeah, exactly, that'd be so exciting.
Well, I mean, if we have business, we may have to.
If we have business, we can talk about scheduling another day, but for now, we'll say.
So we're gonna meet on the tenth.
Says is book night.
Oh, that's. Let's just save the tenth and we'll, if something comes up, we'll.
We'll hold ten.
Another day if possible for all of us, me included.
Okay. Um board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns, Malcolm.
Um I just uh wanna encourage everybody to look at that uh. I called it a home loan modification program, but it's a home modification loan program, so slightly different.
Okay, great, thank you, Malcolm. Jackie, anything for you?
I don't have anything in particular.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy?
I don't have anything from CPA, but. At our um after our meeting, um our joint meeting with the select board lead. Said that she was interested in the housing subcommittee meeting again.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, she said that to me and we kind of couldn't come up with a reason.
Well, one of the things I um I talked to her about was um. Maybe engaging um a developer to meet with. I have.
A specific.
Yeah, and I have a specific reason for it that can.
Do you guys wanna duke that out and then um let us down?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I don't think we're gonna solve that right now.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. Anything else, Jeremy? Okay. Hey, Jeremy, you?
Well, I just wanted to check and talk about the initial I had with the meeting on Monday.
With who on Monday? Oh, the meeting on Monday. Okay.
With this like, well, I think I was really frustrated after the meeting, because I I just kind of considered it a complete. Waste of time. I think the business that we covered could have been done with a letter. And I was disappointed, because putting five schedules together is difficult enough. And I think that there could have been some more substantial discussion happening at that meeting. About the master plan or about maybe some goals that this like board would like to have us focus on or. I just was, you know, my time is is precious, and I know your time is valuable too, and. I just was really frustrated after that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Are you saying specifically that the the agenda was not tight enough? That wasn't enough work put into?
What I said was clear.
I was trying to drill down, Pedro, that's all, to understand it better. I only didn't have the benefit of actually physically being there. I was only watching it on fuzzy TV or video streaming.
I was pretty clear when I when I stated that there was no real substantial substantial discussion happened at the meeting. And that the business that was accomplished could have been done with a letter. Or an email or some other, or just a an appearance of one of us. And and to select board, I didn't think we needed to call to review to that. Okay, I was just feeling frustrated, sorry. I prepared for the meeting, I show up and there there's, you know, nothing happens. Waste of my time.
Okay. Jonathan, anything for you?
Uh no, we're good.
Okay, all right, I don't have anything either. Do we have any citizens speak? Anybody online? All right, seeing no citizens speak, we'll adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-nine. Seven fifty-nine seconds.